Years already.
Okay, I was just wondering, thank you.
You can talk to Steve.
Huh?
If you want to be closer to me, you can talk to Steve.
Yes, if you don't mind.
I'm just curious because I just didn't.
Right, you sort of move your.
Yeah.
It's hard to have a basketball in your hand.
I keep a baseball on my desk every day.
So we only have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, ten, eight, correct? Eight, nine.
We are good.
You're updated?
I'm updated.
All right, I need that. Right, correct.
Oh, wait, no. One second. Remember one.
Ready? I don't know where I have somebody. If we can be. I can be.
Ms. Icahn, can I have a motion to reconvene the public meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. We are back in public session. Here, we're moving to Section Four Routine Business. We have the Board Secretaries' Report for November 2023 and December of 23, the Treasurers' Report for November and December, the Receipt and Transfer Reports for November and December, the Monthly Transfer Reports for December of 23, the High School Activities Report for December of 23, the Food Service Management Cost-Performance Statement for December of 23, the Certified Bill List for January of 2024, the Approval of Minutes, Regular Minutes, December 12th of 23, Confidential Minutes of December 12th of 23, the Reorg Meeting Minutes from January 2nd and the Confidential Minutes also from January 2nd of 2024. Mr. Bromhall, can I have a motion to approve Section Four Routine Business, Items A through H?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Mr. Evans?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion approved. Moving to Routine Matters, Section Five. We have the Enrollment Report for January, as of January 12th, 2024, the Health Report for December of 23, the Fire Alarm Report for December of 23, the Crisis Drill Report for December of 23, and the Superintendent's Monthly Report. Mr. Capello?
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzwater. Thank you, members of the board, and thank you, members of the public, for braving the weather to be out here with us this evening. Of course, thank you to the folks who are watching at home. Well, I'm going to begin with my thank yous. We'll continue. Special thank you to Mr. Mark Tyndall and all of the members of our Buildings and Grounds Department. As all of our folks know, the weather over the last 24 hours has certainly been trying. I was very proud that we were able to open our schools safely today and through thanks to them and all of their efforts, staying up through the night and making sure that our lots were safe. And our transportation staff, Mr. Silva and his team, special thank you to all of them for ensuring that our students were delivered to school safely this morning and arrived home safely in the afternoon. So, thank you to them. I had made a note to parents that they were going to receive a possible call tomorrow morning calling for a two-hour delay. In the time that I wrote that until now, that decision has already been made. So, we will continue to err on the side of caution out of an abundance of care for our community. We will be opening on a two-hour delayed schedule tomorrow as well. So, enjoy the extra sleep and/or playtime in the snow. Congratulations to brothers Douglas and Dwayne Foresome for being the top readers in the Jump into Reading Challenge at New Albany School. Both boys had the opportunity to meet with our state Senator Troy Singleton last week to be awarded a certificate for reading the most books at their respective grade level. And also like to recognize Mrs. Jones and New Albany School who were awarded a proclamation for having read the most books in Burlington County out of any elementary school. So, keep reading, kids. That's an awesome distinction. I'd also like to recognize Ms. Karen Sweet, who was named the December Employee of the Month at the Eleanor Rush School. And she was recognized for her unwavering commitment to both the academic success, excuse me, to the academic success of all of her students. January is National Braille Literacy Month. I'd like to thank the members of our Child Study Team and Mrs. Llewellyn for promoting awareness for those in the visually impaired community and helping to inform the public during National Braille Literacy Month. Congratulations to many of the winners from this year's local DECA competition. I imagine we'll hear a little bit more about that this evening from our high school representative, but we wish them the best of luck as they continue in their competition regionally and statewide and hopefully ultimately nationally. This past Friday, I got to enjoy the Poetry Out Loud Competition at Cinnamonson High School. Congratulations to Junior Eva Quinn, who was the winner, and will move on to compete at Rutgers. She was absolutely fantastic. Ignore my announcement about tomorrow. That has already happened. During the month of January, actually between January 15th and February 15th, I have an update from Mrs. DeClemente, the district's Character Education Coordinator. And she writes, "On MLK Day in 2020, our town, including many staff members and students, came together for an MLK Day of Service. This year, we are attempting to kick off 2024 with a month of service for Cinnamonson Schools. There will be service opportunities scheduled for our students and staff. We will showcase the events we already have in place, and we will highlight the planning for five events scheduled for the month of February. We're hoping to get students back into a service mindset and grow our opportunities in district even further than in the past. Please follow the Character Strong Pirate Proud, I guess that's a hashtag or a group on Instagram, as well as the district Facebook page for more information. Board of Education members are welcome to join us at every event and will be sent an invitation shortly to the Super Supper, which will take place on February 7th. And in the month of January and February, just a couple of highlights to look out for. The Cathedral Kitchen, Food Bank of South Jersey, Pensalkin. Students will be putting together dignity bags. The Trinity AME Church and Grounds Cleanup will be taking place. The Super Supper, which I just mentioned, is coming back. That's always been a highlight of the district. We'll look forward to having that on February 7th. We'll be doing a Cereal for Pajamas Drive the second week of February. The High School National Honor Society will be conducting a blood drive on February 2nd. CMS American Heart Association Volley for a Cure, which will be the PE Department and Student Council volleyball fundraiser. And District-wide, what can we do? The first week of February, canned food dry flyer will be distributed shortly to all members of the Cinnamonson community. So, very proud of the events that will be taking place over the course of the next 30 days here in Cinnamonson to recognize our month of service. So, with that, Mrs. Fitzwater?
Thank you, Mr. Capello. Mr. Evans, can I have a motion to approve Section Five Routine Matters, Items A through A?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Icahn. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Mr. Meeker?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion approved. Moving on to Section Six, the Student Representative Reports. First, we will hear from High School Student Representative, Maddie Hubbard.
Good evening. Golden Apple Award for December. Ms. Shanae Dawkins received the Golden Apple Award and was nominated by Anthony Allison Droni, Matt McCluskey, and Nisana Corosone. December Students of the Month. Class of 2024 Lauren Ringer. Class of 2025 Ben Tienoff. Class of 2026 Anna Costanti. Class of 2027 Casey Gola. Winter sports are continuing their seasons. Boys' basketball, the record is 11-2. Senior night is January 23rd versus Kip Academy. Girls' basketball, the record is 11-2. Senior night is Friday, February 7th versus Palmyra. Wrestling, the record is currently 8-3. Senior night is January 31st versus Lenape. Winter track, the track team took second on girls' and boys' sides in the small school division at the Merrily Invite on the first weekend in January. Derek Robinson placed first in the high jump. Jordan Flunder placed second in the high jump. Sophia Wilers placed first in the pole vault. Charles Keim placed first in the shock put, followed by Killian Pease in second, Jack Rapture in fourth, and Curtis Jenkins in sixth. Swimming, the swim team's record is 4-1. The senior meet is on Saturday, January 6. Bowling, the bowling team's record is 5-7 for the girls and, 5-7 for the boys and girls is 8-4. Senior night is January 30th. Recent high series are Nate Evers with 452 for the boys and Frankie Romi with 431 for the girls. Student council. During January's Month of Service, Student Council is sponsoring CHS's first Super Bowl of caring. Students will bring in cans of soup to their second-period teacher from January 22nd to February 9th. The second period that collects the most cans will win a bagel breakfast hosted by Student Council the week of February 12th. All soup will be donated to the Food Bank of South Jersey. Our goal is 1,000 cans. DECA, 17 students from DECA qualified at Tuesday's conference for the upcoming 2024 NJ DECA State Career Development Conference competition, which is held March 4th to the 6th in Atlantic City. These students receive medallions for their achievements at the award ceremony. In addition, those students placing in first, second, and third also received a DECA Glass Trophy. National Honor Society, NHS will be hosting their annual blood drive on February 2nd in the honors gym from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Students and community members will be able to donate. This year's theme is Choose Love, Donate Blood. Schedules and information to sign up are posted to Cinnamonson High School's Instagram, Facebook, and X platforms. CHS Band, CHS will host its first tournament of bands for our indoor drumline and color guard competition on February 10th. There will be nearly 30 groups from all around the area in attendance. Poetry Out Loud, our annual Poetry Out Loud competition was held on January 12th in the auditorium during periods 8 and 9. Congratulations to Junior Eva Quinn, who will represent CHS at the county-level competition on February 13th at Rutgers University. Interact, Interact collected $103 from the sale of candy grams to donate to the Ronald McDonald House. They're collected, they also collected winter jackets and other items which were donated to the American veterans. They'll be making sandwiches after school on January 17th to give to Cathedral Kitchen in Camden and will be making multicultural dolls for the Ronald McDonald House in Camden as well. Asian-American Pacific Islander Affinity Group. The group raised $463 by selling string bracelets that reflected Hawaii's culture. Funds were donated to the Maui Strong Fund that supports the recovery efforts in Hawaii after devastating wildfires this past summer destroyed whole communities. Several group members have family in Maui that were directly impacted by the fires. World Affairs Council, on Tuesday, December 12th, 12 students from CHS participated in the World Affairs Council of Philadelphia's Model Senate, Science, and Technology Committee Meeting Simulation at Temple University's Fox School of Business. The students engaged with nearly 200 students from 20 schools across the Philadelphia region discussing solutions to issues regarding cybersecurity, AI, and medical innovation. Students were assigned to research a specific person's view on a topic and then role-play the person during a Senate Subcommittee hearing. Kellen Coler portrayed Senator Tammy Baldwin and served as co-chair of the Medical Innovation Subcommittee. Lan Zhang was recognized as outstanding senator, portraying Senator Peter Walsh and Buky Mustafa received honorable mention as the expert witness, Amaya Capellan, for their cybersecurity and AI Subcommittee. Ben Tienoff received honorable mention for his role as Senator John Boozman in the Medical Innovation Subcommittee. Of the 24 awards presented, Cinnamonson High School earned three of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie. And now we'll hear from our middle-school student representative, Kathy Bo.
Good evening to all of you. It's been a while since I last shared. I hope everyone had a relaxing and healthy couple of months. I would first like to report our December Students of the Month. Our middle-school rep, our middle-school students for December were 6th grader Christopher Dickinson, 7th grader Cassidy Freeble, and 8th grader Eric Mercer. Unity Club donated over 200 snack packs to Ronald McDonald House of South Jersey and hosted a holiday breakfast for senior citizens in Cinnamonson. Student members of Unity Club greeted guests, served breakfast and coffee, and raffled off door prizes throughout the event. Unity Club was also joined by CSS, the jazz band, and the dance club to refine entertainment while everyone ate breakfast. This month, Unity Club will make PB&J sandwiches to donate to soup kitchens around the area. The Environmental Awareness Club collected 150 items to donate to local animal shelters. Thank you, CMS families, for your generosity and support. On January 4th, the CMS Counseling Department and the Cinnamontors hosted a winter breakfast for new students. The students had the opportunity to reflect on the start to their new school year and enjoyed some icebreaker activities to learn more about their peers and our school. Winter sports have started, started. Congratulations to wrestling team for being undefeated. The boys' basketball is 4-4 and the girls' basketball is 3-4. The Pirate players just started their first three rehearsals for Seussical Junior, and the show dates are March 15th, 16th, 17th, March 22nd, and two shows on March 23rd. The cast can't wait for the show to come together and are so excited to show everyone their hard work. Our CMS Student Council helped out with organizing the theme for winter snowball for 6th and 7th graders' students only. This Friday, from 6:00 to 8:00, weather permitting. Students should wear casual attire. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, Kathy. Comments or questions from anyone, any of the board members? Great job by both of you, as always. Now, we're moving on to Section Seven, which is a presentation tonight by Mr. Robert Inverso of Inverso and Stewart LLC on the results of the audit year ending June 30th, 2023. Good evening, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to go over the financial summary, where we stand as of June 30th, 2023. I think in front of you, I put a financial summary. So, if I could direct your attention to the left-hand side. This year, in tax levy, we took in $35,544,000. Tuition, $606,000. Transportation aid, $1,608,000. Miscellaneous revenue, $240,000. Federal aid, $64,000. State aid, $16,631,000, $16,831,000. Total revenue, $54,896,222. We expended in the same period, $52,565,601, resulting in a net profit for the year of $2,330,621. We started the year with a fund balance of $16,766,13. We're ending with a fund balance of $19,091,234, which sounds like a lot of money, and it is. It's further defined right below. What makes that up? Reserve for encumbrances, $1,083,000. Capital reserve, $4,248,663,000. Maintenance reserve, $2,535,000. Excess surplus, $4,084,870,000. That's the amount that is required to be put in the 24-25 budget. Designated as next year's expenditures, $4,609,625,000. That's the amount that was put in this year's budget, 23-24,000. Unemployment compensation, 49, excuse me, 904,000. And unreserved and undesignated, $2,038,843,000. Total fund balance, $19,091,234,000. The unreserved and undesignated fund balance is defined below. What makes that up? It's the expenditures times 2% plus the extraordinary aid of $963,507,000 and non-public transportation aid of $24,024,000, resulting in the $2,038,843,000. We expended this year. The budget was $58,479,000. We spent $53,649,000, or about close to 92%, 91.74,000. Kind of close to last year. The way we replace fund balance is by watching what we spend. So, that's what's happening. What's happening in the board, though, we're using a lot of surplus in our money. You know, we're using $4,609,000 and $4,000,000 again. It's difficult to replace that money. It's putting pressure on you to do that, so. But we're okay financially, we're okay. We have a good capital reserve. We have a good maintenance reserve. And we have the maximum in unreserved, unassigned surplus. As far as the board office records, they were in very good shape. There's no comments or recommendations. The board office did a good job. They're very helpful in doing the audit, and they did a very good job. So, Melissa or her staff should be complimented.
Thank you, Mr. Inverso.
Okay, is there any comments or any questions?
Questions from the board?
Hearing none?
Thank you, Mr. Inverso.
Good night, thank you.
Drive safe.
Okay, next section is Section Eight, Correspondence to the Board. Does anyone have anything to share there? Committee reports, we had no regular committees. We did have one ad hoc committee. And we're going to vote on a motion to approve that committee report. Ms. Blystein, can I have a motion to approve Section Nine, Letter A, Committee Reports?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Mr. Meeker?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion approved. Next is 10, Public Comments. Members of the public are reminded that comments should be limited to items appearing on the meeting's agenda. There will be another opportunity during the meeting to comment on non-agenda items. Anybody have any comments for agenda items? Okay, hearing none, we will move to Section 11, Personnel Certificated. Mr. Capello?
Thank you again, Mrs. Fitzwater. Under Section 11, Letter A, Appointments and Transfers, seeking the board to approve item number one, A through D. Under Letter B, Retirement, seeking the board to approve the two items listed in the agenda. Under Letter C, Teaching Overload, seeking the board to approve item number one as listed in the agenda. There is nothing under Letter D. Extra Duty Appointments, under Letter E, seeking the board to approve items one and two as listed in the agenda. Under Leaves of Absence, there is one listed under number, excuse me, under Letter F in the agenda. Under Substitutes, seeking the board to approve the following items under number one, and they are letters A through L. Under Tutors, Letter H, seeking the board to approve the one that is listed in the agenda. Under Letter I, seeking the board to approve items one through four that are listed in the agenda. And under Letter J, we have no mentor teachers, and that is certificated personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Capello. Mr. Meeker, can I have a motion to approve Section 11, Personnel Certificated, Items A through J?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Blystein. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Mr. Evans?
Aye.
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 Aye to all, except I abstain from Letter G, from Letter G, number one, Letter J. Aye to everything else. Motion approved. Moving on to Section 12, Personnel Non-Certificated. Mr. Capello?
Real quickly, Mrs. Fitzwater, I did want to mention that our new ESL teacher was scheduled to be here with us this evening, but because of the weather, we asked her to stay at home. But she does send her appreciation to the board for approving her at this evening's board meeting, and we're excited to have her join our staff. That said, under number 12, Letter A, seeking the board to approve items one and two as listed by letter A through D, number one, and A and B under number two. We have no job descriptions this evening. Under Letter C, Extra Duty, seeking the board to approve items one through four as listed in the agenda. Letter D, Transfers, seeking the board to approve item one, A through C, as listed in the agenda. Substitutes and Volunteers, seeking the board to approve items one through four as listed in the agenda. And under Leaves of Absence, seeking the board to approve number one as listed in the agenda. And that is non-certificated personnel. Mrs. Fitzwater?
Thank you, Mr. Capello. Mr. Kenny, can I have a motion to approve Section 12, Non-Certificated Items, A through F?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Icahn. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Mr. Evans?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion approved. Moving on to Section 13, Curriculum and Instruction. Dr. Goldburn?
Thank you very much. Under 13, Letter A, requesting approval of the professional development requests that are attached. Under Letter B, the field trip requests that are attached. Letter C, I think was supposed to be in the previous section, but items one through four, under resignations for non-certificated personnel. Nothing for D or E this month. Under Letter F, requesting board approval of the Hibb Report for the previous month. And Letter G, the suspension report for the previous month. And Mrs. Fitzwater, those are the items for curriculum instruction.
Thank you, Dr. Goldburn. Mr. Bromhall, can I have a motion to approve Section 13, Curriculum and Instruction, Items A through G?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Mr. Meeker?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion approved. Moving on to Section 14, Special Education. Mrs. Llewellyn?
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzwater. Under Letter A, Contracts, there are none. Under Letter B, Student Placements, requesting the board approve two contract, tuition contract agreements as listed in the agenda. Under Letter C, Consultant Agreement, there is none. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Llewellyn. Mrs. Icahn, can I have a motion to approve Section 14, Special Ed, Items A through C?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Mr. Meeker?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion approved. We've got nothing under Section 15, Policy. So, we're moving on to Business and Finance. Ms. Livinggood?
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzwater. Under Section A, Grants, that the board accepts the revised 23-24 funding statement for services under Chapter 192, 193 as attached. Section B, Item One, that the board approves the mileage reimbursement requests for staff members as attached. Item number two, that the board approves the closeout of the Dr. Frank Davis Scholarship as requested by the sponsor. And B, that the board approves the establishment of the Robert J. Ashley the Fourth Memorial Scholarship Fund. Item number three, that the board approves the annual comprehensive financial report and the auditor's manager, management report on administrative findings for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2023 as attached. Item number four, that the board approves the withdrawal from capital reserve in the amount of four hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and nine dollars to be withdrawn for the completion of the middle school cafeteria HVAC replacement project, and the balance of that project will be coming from ARPAS or grant funds. Section C, Operations, item number one, Donations, that the board accepts with appreciation the following donation, ten thousand, seven hundred, thirty-eight dollars and nineteen cents from the Robert Ash, the Robert J. Ashley the Fourth Memorial Fund to the Cinnamonsen High School for the establishment of the Robert J. Ashley the Fourth Scholarship Fund. Item number two, that the board approves the revised board meeting schedule for the remainder of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as attached. And item three, that the board approves the implementation, implementation of school breakfast for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as attached. And Section D, Contracts, that the board awards a contract for the HVAC replacement system at the middle school to CM3 Building Solutions as per the attached documents. Thank you, Mrs. Fitzwater.
Thank you, Mrs. Livinggood. Mr. Evans, can I have a motion to approve Section Sixteen, Business and Finance, Items A through D?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Messiah Cohen. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Mr. Meeker?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Moving to Section Seventeen, Other Business. Mr. Capello.
Thank you. We have few items tonight under Other Business. Under Letter A, seeking the board to approve the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement between the Cinnamonsen School District and the Cinnamonsen Police Department with the two thousand twenty-three revisions for the current two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Seeking the board's creation of the law enforcement unit as part of the Uniform State MOA between the Cinnamonsen School District and the Cinnamonsen Police Department for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And seeking the board to approve the Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Live Streaming Between the Educational Unit and Law Enforcement Unit for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Under Letter B, seeking the board to approve the appointment of Tony Tops to complete the vacant Board of Education term through December of two thousand twenty-four. Under Letter C, Residency Findings, seeking the board to affirm the administrative finding that the listed students are ineligible to attend, and that is Other Business.
Thank you, Mr. Capello. Ms. Blystein, can I have a motion to approve Section Seventeen, Other Business Items, A through C?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Mr. Meeker?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Section Eighteen, Public Comment. During the Public Comment section of the meeting, the board will seek public comment on any item. Members of the public are reminded that if they wish to speak, when called upon, participants should state their first and last name and address clearly for the record. In accordance with Cinnamonsen Board of Education by Law zero one six four point six, comments will be limited to a maximum of four minutes per person. The comment period will not exceed thirty minutes. With that said, anyone like to make public comment?
Hi, everyone. I'm Dean Blystein, I'm Cinnamonsen. I know that the new board member was chosen, it was updated on the agenda, I believe, and I just have a couple of questions for transparency's sake. Can you please share with us, the people of the town who elected people to represent us on the Board of Education? Can you share with us the criteria you use to choose the new board member? And also, has this board member attended any school board meetings in the past year or past two years? And also, you didn't choose someone who just ran for office, and I'm curious as to why, because people in this town actually voted for Mr. Horrigan. And I'm just, those are a couple of questions that I have, and I'd like them to be answered for transparency's sake. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blystein. Mrs. Fitzwater's permission?
Mm-hmm.
Sure. Because we are speaking transparently, I could let members of the community know that six people did apply to be, for the vacancy that was available. The board is able to determine their own criteria in selecting, you know, what it is that they are looking for in a board candidate. Yes, specifically about any of the candidates attending the board meetings, obviously I have what I can observe and who comes before a board meeting, so I could not say with one hundred percent certainty that this board, that the person that was appointed this evening has been at a board meeting in person. However, I don't know, you know, if folks are watching at home or what their level of involvement is at the board meeting. The board this evening voted, based on their interview process, for an appointment for the balance of this term through December, two thousand twenty-four. At that time, it will once again be turned over to the public for this role, for this position that will need to be elected on by the, by the public at that time, so that's what I'm able to share. Sure.
That question, is you all determined, the Cinnamonsen members determined?
I, I, I am not a voting member of this, of this body, so I'm a non-voting member, but.
I was just curious if you guys come up with the questions you want to ask, or whatever criteria.
There's a standard set of questions. Same questions are asked to every single person so that it is fair.
Do you have a part of the, you know, policy of the school?
It's.
Or is it subjective?
Well, I think i- in any process, it is up to the board, but the actual, like, questions and defining criteria is not outlined.
I didn't know how that process works, or what, based on.
Thank you. Any other?
Do you have to trust live JJ wasn't chosen, so he did?
I'm, I'm not at liberty to discuss what was talked about in an executive session.
Alls we can say is, in the end, a, we, we reached consensus on the person who was selected.
Any other members of the public that would like to address the board? Certainly.
Sorry, my name's Asha Quinn. I live at one-ten Winding Brook. I was wondering if you could say the gentleman's name who will be serving on the board a little bit slower?
Actually, I should clarify, the lady's name is Tony, T-O-N-I, Tops, T-O-P-P-S. And she, we are anticipating that she will be sworn in. Any member of the board is pending background clearance, so as soon as the background clearance is, we are motivated to have that person sworn in so that we can serve as a full nine-member board.
Okay. And then, are the names of the people that applied public?
That is a great question. Yeah, I, it's actually one I would, you know, I'd certainly love to, but I would love to respect their privacy as well. I would just like to verify with those individuals and verify with our attorney before I share that publicly, but I'm perfectly happy, and I believe that the candidates themselves may wish to avail themselves and let the public know that they were interested. But that is one that I would prefer to consult with our attorney, make sure I don't violate anyone's confidentiality or their expectation of privacy.
Okay, certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. I will follow up, though.
Brittany Ralvis. We're transparent until we get stumped. I have a question about the, the MOA with the law enforcement. Are we making revisions because we weren't up to code now that we've been doing all these crisis plans and everything? So I guess, I know you're not going to answer my question, but that's, I mean, we're almost, we started school in September, in the middle of January, that's concerning.
Actually, if you, if you don't mind, I would like to clarify.
You are, oh my gosh.
Because you're, you're bringing up a very important question about student safety.
Thank you.
Every year, the Department of Education releases guidelines for the MOA agreement between public school districts and local law enforcement. While I can't necessarily agree that they should be releasing it in the middle of the year, as soon as they release it, we sign those papers. So they were released by the Department of Education just within the last thirty days. Soon as that was released, the updated guidelines, right? Currently, we were working under the previous guidelines, which any revisions are typically minor, but we are signing a document that is given to us with updated guidelines from the NJDOE, which again, happened in the last thirty days. So that's why it's happening this evening, whereas typically, one, one would expect within reason that you would sign that ahead of the school year, but questions as to the timeline for when Trent releases it to us is out of our hands.
Okay, so in line with that, it mentions the creation of a law enforcement unit. So what is that, again, for Cinnamonsen, what does that look like? I mean, we clear, we all know we have SROs in the school. What, what, what's the law enforcement unit who's spearheading that law enforcement unit, who is making up that law enforcement unit, other than an SRO?
Yeah, so essentially, the law enforcement unit is the Cinnamonsen Township Police Department. It's very easy in the township of Cinnamonsen to know, these are the police, and these are the police that support us. But in every township and every public school district, that's not necessarily the case in the state of New Jersey, particularly for townships and districts that may be covered by state police. So our law enforcement unit is our Cinnamonsen Police Township.
So basically, we're approving the creation of the Cinnamonsen Police Department? Is that what you're telling me?
As an educate, as, to be able to enforce the MOA between school district and law enforcement, it's basically identifying the parties that enter into this agreement. It's been a, an annual document that's been signed every.
Well, I would assume our hometown police would respond to the schools in, within their jurisdiction.
Of course.
I would also assume that we would have backup from other towns if necessary, right? Or would we?
Absolutely.
Of course.
We do end.
Last question. The live streaming between the education and law enforcement, very vague, just to be clear, is this stating that law enforcement now has access to livestream and tap into any of the cameras that are within the school at any time?
Within certain restrictions, but yeah, I mean, it is, it is a requirement that we allow law enforcement to have access to our livestream for a, God forbid, emergency that happens in real time. They have the ability to be able to tap into our system, to be able to respond in real time to our camera system.
So are you telling me this is something that's just now happening in Cinnamonsen?
Absolutely not. I'm saying this is something that we need to renew every year, and.
So you're just renewing that the law enforcement, whatever law enforcement unit we have created here is, because, I mean, there's lots of different law enforcement within the Cinnamons Police Department.
Correct.
We've got juvenile law enforcement officers, detectives. I, I mean, so it's very vague. So basically, the law enforcement unit is the Cinnamonsen Police Department, correct? And livestreaming capabilities is by anyone employed by the law, law enforcement officers employed by the Cinnamonsen School District, correct?
No.
Or not the school district, the Cinnamonsen Police Department.
That is not correct. Right, there are, so, so there are limitations into what officers can access.
Where can I see where that is?
I would suggest that you contact Rich Calabrese, the Chief of Police, and he can give you some of the guidelines that, that we.
Well, I sent my kids to your school, so I was just curious on what your response is to that.
Sure.
But I will have no problem contacting Rich Calabrese as well, but I'm asking Steven Capello.
Is there a concern related to it? I can tell you.
I just want to be very transparent for everyone here and everyone live streaming. So you're just going to argue with me? Okay. You want me to finish my thought?
Sure, go ahead, finish your.
I'll reach out to Rich. Have a great night.
Thanks. Any other members of the public?
All right. We're going from public comments to comments from the board. Mr. Kenny.
Congratulations to our DECA students on your representation of Cinnamonsen High